...of allegiance.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rick?
Here.
Councilmember Hinton?
Here.
Councilmember Geek?
Here.
Councilmember Estes?
Here.
Councilmember Hersberg? Councilmember Duncan?
Present.
I have six members present.
No, Councilmember Hersberg is going to attempt to call in, so I assume we're ready for that. So, all righty, that takes us on to item four, Public to be Heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to five minutes or less. And I do have three cards here tonight. And so the first card I have is from Colt Simmons. If you could come down to the mic here in the middle and push the middle button.
Good evening, Colt Simmons. I just wanted to introduce myself. I grew up here in Colorado Springs and then joined a small organization after college and high school called the U.S. Air Force. And then been in Teller County since I retired and as a Teller County assessor and different jobs. I just want to say it's great to be back in El Paso County. I've been proactive in the public sphere, business world, and in the military. I'm happy to be here. The mayor, I saw her the other day at a nice function. She said, why don't you get down here and come visit and say hi? So that's why I'm here. It's great to be back here, back in El Paso County. It's a great county. Appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing here in Fountain. I ran a city. It's called an Air Force base. I was the deputy base commander of a base of about thirty, thirty-five thousand people. So I understand what you guys deal with. Believe me, I do. It's great to be back. I just wanted to say hi. Looking forward to meeting you all, working with you all as a volunteer. Also listening to John here, who will be up here on the American Legion post. He's running a great post, which I'm a member at. And this is just great to be back here. So that's my comment, just to say hello. And lastly, I did have an issue when I moved in last month to my new house. And the city manager, Scott, was very gracious and assisted me with a matter. It was handled very professionally, very efficiently, and expedited. So thank you, sir, for that help. So I really don't have any other comments except to say hello. It's a pleasure to be back.
Much welcome. Thank you. All right, my next card is from Mr. Langley. Please come down.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John Langley, American Legion Post 38 commander. Just going to say thank you. We really enjoyed being able to lead the parade for Labor Day, so that was really nice. I think we were just one shy of being all of our flags flying that day, so that was a good showing for us. This Thursday, we have some representatives from the VA that are going to be for El Paso County residents. So if they have any issues and they're wanting to file some claims with the VA, this Thursday, starting at four o'clock, they will be there to help people fill out those forms to try to start getting help as far as the VA goes. Next Tuesday, September the sixteenth, our National Commander for the American Legion is going to be at Post 38. It's going to be a meet and greet dinner. And we're going to be having a fried breaded pork chop and vegetables and a dessert. But it's just going to be kind of laid back, get around, shake his hand, talk to him a little bit. And that's pretty much what he's wanting to do. This Friday, we also have our auxiliary dinner, which will be in honor of nine eleven. So all active duty and first responders get ten dollars off. So it'll be a ten dollar meal for them as opposed to a twenty dollar meal. And that is about it. Thank you very much for your time. Any questions?
Nope, thank you. I believe Councilmember Hersberg is logged in now? She's telling me she's logged in. Can we make sure? Okay, all righty. All right, and the last card I have is from Connie Weisenhut on community events. Push that middle button. There you go. Thank you.
Good evening, Connie Weisenhut, candidate for city council at large. I wanted to share with you that we have a community event happening September twentieth. You may have seen some of them in the parade, but they're my son's friends. And we will have them at the bookstore. It's a free community event. And it is going to be That Man, who is Batman, and Jet Pole, which is Deadpool, and Wolverine, and he is SoCo Logan, and Ranger Jose. He's got the dinosaurs with Jurassic Park. And Bob, he is our, actually forgot, Blade. Blade. So we will have six of our wonderful characters at the Book Archive September twentieth for all of the kids in the community to come take pictures in the Batmobile. And it's from two to four o'clock at seven twenty-three Dell Street at the Book Archive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The kids were having a lot of fun with them at the Fall Festival. So, all righty, that is all the cards that I have. And that takes us on to presentations. There are none tonight. Item five point two, Board Commission and Committee Appointments. There are none tonight. Item six, Correspondence, Comments, and Ex officio Reports. Mr. Trainer and Miss down the row?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just really want to introduce you, since Chris Strider is out of town right now, to our Assistant City Attorney. I didn't realize she hadn't been actually formally introduced here. And so that's sort of an oversight on our part. She's our Assistant City Attorney. She's taken over, doing a phenomenal job. She's also the prosecutor for the court, and we're just excited to see her here. Glad to have her. Oh, sorry, did I say that? Stephanie Curry. I apologize.
Thank you.
Anybody else down the row? Okay, Madam Clerk's office? IT, anything? Okay, we'll start to the left tonight. Mr. Rick, Councilmember Rick.
Just a reminder, and I hope I get these dates right. It's October seventh and eighth. We are having our annual budget presentation. And as I understand it, that's going to be broadcast on YouTube. So if you can't make it, please log in online so we can get your feedback as well as give our own to the city staff regarding the city budget. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Before we go, the next one, Councilmember Hersberg is saying her mic is muted. So when I get to calling on her, she'll... Can we unmute her? Councilmember Geek? Councilmember Estes?
I just want to bring up that Fountain Creek Week is coming up. We read the resolution into perpetuity, but I just want to remind everybody that it is coming up. I serve on the Fountain Creek Watershed District Board, and I have for the last six years. I'm honored to be representing the city on that board, and it's important for the cleanup effort. Our community is deeply connected to the watershed. It flows through our city, provides essential natural resources, and supports the quality of life we value so much. Being part of the partnership means we are not just protecting our creek. We're investing in public health, recreation, economic vitality, and the future of our children. Two programs like Creek Week and collaborative restoration projects like the one of Southmore Drive, residents of Fountain have had the opportunity to see the watershed programs and projects firsthand. The city of Fountain is proud to work alongside the watershed with regional governments, nonprofits, and volunteers. Together, we can show that we can accomplish more with our partnerships. We know that the watershed health doesn't stop at city boundaries, and our cooperation demonstrates the strength of working as one watershed community. We encourage all residents to take part, whether by joining a cleanup crew, attending an event, or simply caring for the creek in our daily lives. Together, we can continue making a lasting impact on our city and our region. At this point, there are nine public cleanups happening in Fountain during the twelfth Annual Creek Week. We encourage you to pick a date, pick a site, and pick it up. Just go to, it's www.fountain-crk.org to register in advance. And there's all around the area. Please look on there. I'm not going to read the whole list. And the event will be from September twenty-seventh until October fifth. So that is coming up. So get out there and enjoy participating in the twelfth Annual Creek Week.
All right, thank you. Councilmember? Hinton? We're pushing already.
No worries. So, welcome, Ms. Curry. It's good to have you. I've sat in a couple of your courtroom sessions. Probably didn't know that, but you're doing a great job, so I appreciate you. Thank you.
Councilmember Hersberg?
Thank you. Nothing for me tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Duncan?
There is going to be an initiative on the ballot coming up this November, and it's yes on LL and MM. And it's healthy school meals for all. I'm not seeing for anyone to support or not to support. I just want you to do your homework and be aware that this will be on the ballot. And sometimes we get the ballot and there's so much language we don't understand. But if you'd like to know more about that, you can go on the Thriving Communities page. They have a proposal on LL and Proposition MM. And both of these measures are needed to continue Colorado's healthy school meals for all programs to keep kids fed. So the hashtag is Keep Kids Fed. So that's Proposition LL and MM. We have a home buyers workshop that the Pike's Peak Association of Realtors is having on September the twenty-fourth, and that's from one to four. They are having a workshop on local housing market, preparing for homeownership, choosing a realtor. We hear a lot of things about the interest rate. They help you select the right house and the right mortgage. They have things for veterans. So again, that is on September the twenty-fourth from one to four. And we have SICACEL Awareness Month. This is September, SICACEL Awareness Month. And SCD is a general term for a group of inherited blood disorders. And there will be a musical on Saturday, September the twenty-seventh, from three to six-thirty at the formerly Hotel Elegant, if you'd like to attend. You can go on their Facebook page for lma.org. We also have our elections that are right around the corner. This is also considered, September the sixteenth is coming up, is our National Voter Registration Day. And it's an American duty to vote. So I encourage you to call five friends and remind them to check their voter registration status. If you have any issues with that, you can contact the Citizen Service Center and or visit Garden of the Gods area. And the number to the Citizen Service Center is seven one nine five seven five eight six eight three. Again, September the sixteenth is National Voter Registration Day. And the last thing is about remembering nine eleven. That's coming up and is honoring those nearly three thousand lives that were lost in two thousand and one. I know a lot of our kids don't know what that is. It's like a movie to them. But a lot of us in this room know that it happened, and we know how it felt when it happened. Those terrorist attacks that, you know, don't stay at home that day. Find something to go to, even, you know, just whisper a prayer for the families that are remembering their loved ones. So we don't want to forget those that died for us. And supporting our first responders and victim of families is something that we should always do. So thank you.
All right, I would just like to give a shout out to the chamber and the employees that helped with the Fountain Fall Festival. Another great event. I think the community really enjoys that. And a lot more fun stuff, and they get more ideas for next year. But thank you to the chamber and the various staff members for everything they do for that, because a lot of it, we don't even see. People putting out the street block signs and getting the parks all cleaned up and emptying the trash all day long during that event. So thank you very much to everybody for participating in that. I attended a group called the Bailey Military Support Group, and I hope Legion is connected with them. They are a nonprofit group that operates in the area, and they work with a lot of suicide, people that have attempted suicide, thought about suicide veterans, and giving them support within the community so that they're not alone. And some of the stories that were shared at that event last week were pretty heartbreaking. And so they are around in our area. So if you might go to their Facebook page and check them out. And I do have the contact info if you guys are interested in that. So, but it is a gal who, former military, who set it up for herself. So she's not a huge organization, just real small operating, and they meet... I'm not sure if they meet monthly or quarterly, but they're a great organization. All right, so that takes us out of Ex officio reports and on to the consent agenda. Item seven, all items listed in the consent agenda are considered routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the council's discretion. We have item A, council meeting notes from August twenty-seventh. What would council like to do? Councilmember Rick?
Move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Councilmember Hinton?
I second.
Here we have a motion and a second. Any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Councilmember Hersberg, how do you vote?
Yes.
Have seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay, that takes us on to item eight, Old Business. There is none. Item nine, New Business. Nine eight, Considerations of Items Removed From Consent Agenda. There were none. Item B, Resolution Number twenty-five dash zero three nine, a resolution establishing the one fifty-two fifty Steering Committee for the Purpose of Planning and Coordinating the City's Participation in the Colorado's one fiftieth Anniversary and the United States' two hundred and fiftieth Anniversary Celebrations. Mr. Trainer and Ms. Estes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am excited to present this mainly because I want to be able to say the word sesquicentennial. I had to think about that. That's a long word. I'm not sure that's a real word, but it, you know, ChatGPT thought it was. Anyway, this is actually an opportunity, beginning really in July of this year, but going all through 2026, is a celebration of Colorado's one hundred and fiftieth anniversary and the United States' two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. What the state of Colorado is trying to do, and they're encouraging all the communities in the state to get involved with, is celebrating in some way that big celebration. That's a big milestone. And so this resolution in front of you creates this steering committee to start having discussions and figuring out, how can we participate? And by the way, that participation can be anything from just helping to brand events that happen throughout the year with, you know, with logos, with the one fifty-two fifty kind of logo. It could be creating events around that. But they're just a whole bunch of different ideas. It could be doing activities or programs with schools, educational kind of things, things with the museum. So this idea is to bring together a group of folks who may be interested in helping determine what those kind of events would be, come together, steer that, and likely create some subcommittees to help go out and do the things, whatever those things are. And so that's what's put before you. Councilmember Estes is really instrumental in bringing this together. And so you can see the resolution there. It establishes a committee. It establishes seven members. And you can see what we're trying to do is spread out. We want to get activity from the school districts or participation from the school districts, from the chamber, from the military, from Fort Carson, et cetera. So we've tried to sort of spread out membership to get that broad swath of our community to help feed into that. Gives a little bit of some of the terms around the appointment and removal, et cetera. And essentially what's going to happen, if the council decides they want to move forward with this, we'll bring together, we'll bring some folk, we'll put this out to the community, bring some folks, some names to the council for appointment to get this thing off the ground. And that will really be the standing committee until it disbands at the end of 2026. So all the way through 2026. That's what that charter does. It really creates some real basic officers and rules, some duties and responsibilities, and then the sunset for that. So I don't know if there's any questions or thoughts or comments, or Councilmember Estes?
The only comment I had is when we were fleshing this out and we were coming up with the seven members, we got very specific, and I would like to suggest that for the two school districts, instead of saying that they're from one from each district, is that we have two representatives from the schools in the area and so that we don't confine ourselves.
Okay.
And then also, instead of one representative from Fort Carson and one veteran representative, I would like to have that one representative from an active duty military and the veteran.
Okay. I think that's great.
So we are not choosing any members tonight. We are just adopting this. And so I didn't catch those really quick. So if you could go those...
School district combined, just school contacts, two representatives from schools.
So if D three put two forward?
Yeah, and we select those, then so be it. We'd like them to be from different, but we don't want to hem ourselves in.
Okay, and then the other suggestion that you had was?
Instead of Fort Carson and active duty.
Active, okay. All right. Would you... Is there any further discussion from anybody up here? Anyone in the audience? Okay, so would you like to go ahead and make the motion and with those amendments?
I move to adopt Resolution Number twenty-five dash zero three nine with the amendments of removing the District Eight and District Three is to just be representatives from two schools, from the schools in the area. And instead of saying Fort Carson, it's just an active duty military.
Okay, that is the motion. Councilmember Geek?
I second that motion with the changes.
Okay. I do have deliberation up here, just more of a comment. How are we going to make sure, since we've opened it up, that we include any private or charter schools in the area? They're free, so let's make sure we get the word to them too. Okay? All right?
Yeah, I'm trying to think.
So that is the motion, and so please vote.
Councilmember Hersberg, how do you vote?
Yes.
We have seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay, that takes us on to item nine C, First Reading of Ordinance eighteen fourteen and Ordinance Amending Chapter seventeen point zero four Zoning Districts, Section seventeen point zero four point one five zero B, Planned Industrial Units PI, permitted principal uses to add factory-built non-residential structure. amend Chapter seventeen point zero four Zoning Districts, Section seventeen point zero four point one five zero D, Development Standards to Add Performance Standards for Factory-Built Non-Residential Structures and amend Chapter seventeen point three one Definitions of the Fountain Municipal Code. Ms. Martinez, and next time we have that many numbers, you get to read it.
Thank you. Good evening, Kristy Martinez with the City of Fountain Planning Department. Chris, could you pull up the presentation, the PowerPoint presentation? So the item before you is a proposed amendment to the Fountain Municipal Code Title seventeen, which pertains to zoning, more specifically to factory-built non-residential structures within the Planned Industrial Zone District. How this kind of came about is, over the years, we've, in the community, have had various inquiries from residential, commercial, and industrial entities of allowing factory-built modular manufactured housing structures, or in this instance, just the non-residential structures, throughout our city. As our current code is written, it is strictly limited to two specific zone districts, which is the manufactured housing subdivision and the manufactured housing park districts, where those types of structures would be allowed. A lot of this has derived from just the aesthetics looks of the pre-manufactured structures, what they look like. When many people think of, what does a modular manufactured structure look like? They go back to some of those late seventies, early eighties, early nineties, where they're really just boxy. There's not a whole lot of visually appealing or aesthetically appealing looks to them. So as that industry has changed and evolved, you know, there's been advances in the construction quality. Some people may argue that those types of structures are more cost efficient. You talk to others in the industry, and they say, actually, it's pretty on par with, you know, site-built construction. So really, it kind of comes down to what does the city, you know, want within our community? Are we more concerned with where a structure is built in a manufacturing facility versus on-site? Or are we more concerned with what that structure looks like? And we don't really care so much about, is it constructed in a manufacturing facility? So the big question is, what is a factory-built structure? Essentially, it's a structure that is substantially constructed within a manufacturing facility and could then be moved or transported to the site. You know, sometimes, there are many times when, like, new homes, their trusses are assembled in a factory and then hauled to the site. In these instances, the primary structure is essentially constructed within a manufacturing facility and then transported and placed on-site for the placement on the foundation and moving forward with the development. They still follow the same building code requirements through regional building. There we go. Too far. So this amendment kind of starts to contemplate, what does this really want? You know, what do we want in our community? Do we focus more on the aesthetics of it? So this amendment that's being considered tonight would be to allow the non-residential factory-built structures within the Planned Industrial Zone District. And we're really going to focus more of the architectural design of what that structure looks like and less on where it was actually constructed. We've assessed the timeframe of, if it can't be constructed, no more than ten years prior to the adoption of this ordinance. And that timeframe is consistent with the existing ordinance within the manufactured housing park and manufactured housing subdivisions to ensure that we do have units that are coming into our community that are more current with the building standards and aren't some of these older outdated, not visually appearing structures. And then again, it's focusing more on the horizontal articulation, which is essentially breaking up the building facade with visual elements. So you're not just seeing a blank wall with no windows, no architectural designs, no visual appealing elements to it. That can be done through different changes in the roof pitches, roof forms, chains and planes. You can add bay windows, canopies, windows, portacles, you know, various different architectural elements to kind of create that same site-built architecturally, visually appealing structure. And then to have different changes in textures or materials on at least fifty percent of the facade area. Again, so that's to eliminate the monotony of the just blank wall, unappealing visual aspect of it. There is some standards that are proposed to minimize the blank walls along elevations that face the public streets and then within the customer parking areas, and to really enhance the customer entrance area. So whether that's with a canopy, whether the front entrance is kind of more prominent or maybe more recessed, or something to kind of draw the eye to that entrance. And so the next slide is going to kind of show some different, I have a couple of slides here. They're going to show various factory-built structures that have some of those positive and negative aspects that I've spoken of. So on this slide, there are four very typical kind of construction-y. They're just coming in in one or two pieces placed on the property. Some of them are placed on platforms so they can be pulled out. They're not on a permanent foundation. It's just kind of a temporary that's there, and it may be there under the guise of quote-unquote being temporary. And temporary then turns into five, ten, twenty years. That's really not the purpose of a temporary structure. Their mechanical equipment on the lower left-hand side of the photo, it's not screened from view in any manner. It's just they have the HVAC units out on the side. It's not blended in at all. It's not screened. And same with the lower right. The visual aspect of the mechanical equipment, just the front entrance. And then the next slide shows four other types of factory-built non-residential structures that have included some of those same architectural design standards that are proposed within the amendment, where they have canopies, significant front entrances. This kind of shows what a factory-built, this was a coffee shop building, being constructed within the assembly facility itself. So you can see that they've enhanced the facade with the stucco, and then they have brick or stone veneer on the lower half. They kind of have a canopy. It's kind of hard with the redaction of the business name on there, showing where the customers can kind of go up to the window. But it has that much more visual appearance to it. And so you can kind of see what the, you know, very lower end of visual enhancements versus the upper end of what can be imposed. So if we're really focused on what it looks like, the second slide with those four examples is really going to emphasize what that would look like. So therefore, should city council agree with the proposed amendment to the municipal code, then an affirmative motion would be made approving Ordinance eighteen... approving Ordinance 1814 on first reading. Are there any questions for staff?
Here's any questions from anybody up here? I just want to stress, this is only planned industrial, correct?
That's correct.
Nothing else in town?
Nothing else at this time.
Okay.
It would be kind of opening that door for the larger conversation with consultants, the general public. Where do we want to go with this? We have to be cautious. There is some state legislation in place that says, especially in residential areas, that we can't treat manufactured or factory-built houses differently than a site-built. So if we require architectural enhancements on one, we have to require architectural enhancements on all. So that same line of thinking is going with the, this proposed industrial aspects of it. If we're more concerned with the visual, then let's focus on that and less on where the structure itself is constructed.
Okay. Councilmember Rick?
Can you go back to the first slide, please? So...
The slide or the other slide?
The other slide. So constructed no more than 10 years prior to the adoption of the ordinance. Is that the adoption of the original ordinance or the adoption of the amendment we're doing tonight?
It would be the adoption of this ordinance tonight.
Okay. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
I had kind of a question, sort of along those same lines, too, that, does, so that, does that move, so like 10 or 15 years from now? You could have 20-year-old structures being brought in because, I mean...
Yes. It wouldn't necessarily move. It would be tied to this date. However, with the big asterisk in it, if there are changes, you know, we are kind of just dipping our toe in the water. Is this what we want? Are these changes what we want? The architectural stuff, are they strong enough? Are they not strong enough? Do we need to add more definition? We can always change that with future amendments. So right now, should it pass today, it would be a 2015 or newer. And say in 10 years, we go, you know, the industry has changed yet again, and we really like some of the newer designs. Maybe we should update that or sooner. And we can update that accordingly and change that timeframe with that.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions from up here? All right, is there anyone in the audience with a question? Please come down and state your name for the record, please, and turn on the mic.
Connie Weisenhund. Kristi, can you talk a little bit? We have churches who are currently using a lot of these buildings because they don't have the funds to add on to the actual building. So does that mean that it has to be updated? It can't be looking old like it is? Or they're on a time limit already?
So I'm going to break that down a little bit, but that's a good question. So right now, we do have a section of the code that allows, in this instance, religious institutions as a temporary use, where they can bring in some of these pre-manufactured units on a temporary basis. I believe it's one to two years. I don't know the exact timeframe. So a lot of what you're seeing out there are under that type of a permitting process. This aspect, again, is more for the non-residential and the industrial area, where it's more of that permanent structure, where it's not meant to be there temporary. It's more to be permanent. So they're kind of two different permitting processes.
So I guess I'm confused as to who's using them permanently if they're not residential, because you're saying these are not residential. This is commercial. So we don't want them to be temporary. So can you give me an example of who's using them currently? That's other than like...
Under, that are currently using them for commercial or industrial? Is that the question?
Who is this going to affect and apply to? Because we're not talking residential here, so...
Correct. Chris, can you pull up that map real quick? It's right now, it's geared specifically for any property that zoned the planned industrial. And so on the zoning map here, it would be this lighter purple area. So I-25 is kind of along this left side of the screen. So the lighter purple areas, the frontage along Highway 16, kind of the eastern boundary along I-25 is also zoned industrial. And then at the exit 132, for the South Santa Fe exit, a large portion of the areas on the west side of I-25 in that area are also zoned, the planned industrial. There are a handful of pockets on the east side of I-25 that are also zoned planned industrial. So it would be applicable to those zone districts or those properties that are within that zone district.
Okay.
And right now, if I could add something. Right now, you don't see it being done. What we're saying is, hey, should we open it up to allow? Because there are times where we have developers that are saying, hey, you know, I'm going to do a big yard to put my equipment in or whatever. And I really have this idea to bring in this nice-looking office, but it's a pre-manufactured building. And we look at that and we go with our 40-year-old minds, where, you know, the, what those buildings were like 40 years ago, that were just the boxes that you saw. And of course, they still make them that way. But we look at it and go, well, that's not really what they need to look like. They need to have some sort of quality look or it just doesn't look like a temporary thing. And so the idea is to create this change in the code that allows for a nicer look, but still allows them to say, you know what? Yeah, if we want to bring in a manufactured building, do we really care if it's stick-built or if it's built in a factory, as long as it has a quality look?
Okay.
Because sometimes you have developers. I'll give you an example on a commercial standpoint. Dutch Brothers. Dutch Brothers is a company that oftentimes will go into a commercial area. And I know we're not talking about commercial, but just as an example. And it's part of their model. They were, they will drop in a building that looks just like the one they've stick-built in Fountain, but they have a pre-manufactured model that looks just like that. And so they do that, it's easy. I assume they do it because it's easy, probably maybe cheaper. I don't know, but that's a model they seem to like to use. But in Fountain, you don't, they don't have that option. And so they stick-build it, and that's fine. But we just want to be able to provide the option for someone to do that, if that works for what they want to do.
I just hope it doesn't deter people who are on a big budget with a building, who would come into the city, possibly bring in employment. And is that going to deter them from wanting to do it here in Fountain? It's my only thought. Thank you.
I would think it would encourage them to come if they have the option between a stick-built and a modular home, like the Dutch Brother example he gave. They might have said, oh, heck, we don't want to do stick-built, you know. But, so I think it's going to open up more opportunities. So, all right. So is there any further, anybody else in the audience? Okay, already any, bring it back up here to the dais. Does it, any, yes? Thank you for reminding me of that. Thank you. Councilmember Hersberg, did you have anything you wanted to say on this?
No, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, I'll bring it back up to the dais. And what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Duncan?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Ordinance 1814 on first reading.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember Hinton?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote. Councilmember Hersberg, how do you vote?
Yes.
I have seven yes, motion carried. Thank you. Are there any city council agenda requests?